The United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are being Mr. Howe, Commissioner Benadocwen, Commissioner Nodikam, Commissioner Miller, Vice Chair Lamont is excused, Commissioner Canelo is excused, and your official meeting, Mayor Terry Lanahan.
Resident.
Thank you very much. And a reminder, everyone can speak in your microphone.
Provided for public comment at this time is available for anyone to add with comments or line messages. Item number 12, agenda. Is there anyone? Any on, any of them? No?
Nobody's raising their hand.
Nope.
Item number six is the approval of the amendment for March eighth, two thousand and three. Everyone read those? And corrections coming in here? I'm going to adopt the amendment for March eighth, one twenty-three. There's a group of commissioners on hand, just on the House, that's right. For approval of the March eighth amendment of two thousand and five, say aye, so forward. Yeah, item number seven, the public hearing, which is a legislative public hearing, in which we will be making representation through the city conference. So, could I please give the process of the public thing?
Thank you, Chair King. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a legislative public hearing on file P eight twenty-three dash zero three eight, North Plains Downtown Improvement Plan and Code Text Amendment. Your order of business will be as follows. The chairperson will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The commission may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. The written reports, comments submitted on behalf of this item will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed amendment. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The chairperson will call for additional comments and discussion. The chairperson will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a date certain. All persons scheduled to attend shall be in party to the proceeding and must provide their name and home mail and address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeal, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making that decision. Those criteria and binding the fact are a necessary staff report. Public testimony should be delivered in those criteria and binding the fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person has assigned fully supplies to the code land use action. They'll use a brazen issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing party and partners to the hearing and opportunity to respond to that issue, propose a field, and warn the land use board.
All right, I will. Public hearing, seven four, for the downtown improvement plan. So if I could please give the staff report at this time?
Yes, thank you, Chair King. Tonight, we do have our consultant here with us tonight, who will also be providing additional staff report for you, but I'll provide a little bit of an overview, kind of to catch you up from what we've done to date, and then she will pick it up from there and provide the rest of the staff report. So let me go ahead and share my screen here. And. So, as you know, at your last meeting, Kate's coworker Matt was here and kind of went through some of this information with you, but I'll just brief you one more time on it, so we all know what we're looking at and what we're doing here. So. Excuse me. So, the North Plains Downtown Improvement Plan Project was funded by a grant from ODOT and DLCD through the Transportation and Growth Management Program. That's what got us the funds to be able to hire Kate and Matt from MIG to help us with this process. So we appreciate that grant. The North Plains Downtown Improvement Plan was developed between the summer of 2021 and the spring of 2023 with the help of the project advisory team, the City of North Plains staff, the Economic Development Committee, downtown stakeholders, and the broader North Plains community. So that kind of took place, you know, starting in the summer of 2021 and carrying through now to what we have as a final proposal for these meetings tonight. In terms of the study area, the study area consisted of the city's downtown core, generally bounded by Northwest Wasco Street to the north, Glencoe Road to the east, Cottage Street to the south, and Northwest Glencoe Road to the west. So that was the area that was the focus for this project. And it doesn't mean that the project's going to extend all the way out to these boundaries. It was just the area that was looked at to see what we could do to help enhance the downtown area. The primary purpose of the downtown improvement plan is to strengthen the North Plains downtown core to help enhance the economic vitality and the livability of the downtown. So that's really what this portion of the downtown improvement plan is about tonight is looking at proposed text amendments that will assist in some of those efforts there. And then in terms of the process, it included four phases. The first one examining that downtown core area and looking at the existing conditions of those areas, looking at our land use code and our transportation plan to see what improvements could potentially be made there to help assist with some of these goals. And then we ended up with some recommendations from all those meetings with the PAC and stakeholders. And here we are today now with a final North Plains Downtown Improvement Plan for the code amendments for you to look at tonight. The downtown improvement plan recommendations, there are three primary recommendations in the downtown improvement plan, one being the land use and urban design, proposed changes to the North Plains Development Code to enhance urban design, that would be primarily in the, my, I have a typo here, it says C one, that should be C two, I apologize for that. And parking, onsite parking requirements for new uses in the downtown area. So those are the real big ones tonight. Two was transportation. That really focused on the development code and the transportation system plan. Those are not before you tonight, but those are additional components that could come before you in the future. And then the recommendations to encourage both immediate and long-term action to enhance the vitality of the downtown area in North Plains. And those are kind of ongoing steps that we'll continue to look into and see what ones we can bring in in the future. And so at this time, we are kind of on to the next steps. And so tonight, the planning commission is holding a public hearing to consider the final downtown improvement plan text amendments to the C one, the M two, and the onsite parking requirements. And then tonight, in terms of what we're looking for from the planning commission, we're looking for a recommendation from the planning commission to the city council. And your recommendation could be to recommend approval of the proposal that we have right now. You could recommend approval to the proposal with some specific amendments to it, or you could recommend denial of the proposal to the city council. So with that, I will turn it over to Kate, and she will continue the staff report for the city.
So, yes, so we're going to run through, just again, kind of reiterating the project purpose, process overview, some engagement that we did, and you and Steve has kind of already covered this. And for those of you that were here at the work session a few days ago, this will all be kind of familiar information. But just for the folks that maybe haven't heard of this yet, continue for the next slide please. So, yeah. All right, so project overview again, strengthening downtown North Plains. We kind of set out with sort of four or five main kind of focus areas, so supporting existing and future businesses, facilitating new developments, and maybe reuse of existing land and buildings in the downtown. Enhancing safety and access for all modes of travels, that was very sort of a transportation focus of the project. And then creating kind of a more welcoming main street, so addressing things of sort of the aesthetic appeal and the way the streets and our downtown area where you're sitting there. All right, next slide. So the six goals that emerged to kind of guide this work were enhancing downtown as a destination for both community members and visitors, supporting business vitality, employment, and development, multi-modal connections and transportation choices, so not just, not just safety for drivers and access for drivers, but also folks that are walking or biking while they're taking transit, enhancing the living feel, providing more housing choices, and that might be sort of a longer term goal, but that was also one of the things that we considered this part of the project. And then, let's see, the last one, but I think it was creating an implementable plan, so making sure that the recommendations are practical and we have some, some steps for the city to move forward with or whether we've done and implemented. And then, planning process, I think Steve already kind of covered this, so I think we can kind of move on. Just to touch on the key engagement, we did have a public advisory or project advisory committee that kind of guided the process. And we had five meetings with them, and they kind of provided input of kind of key milestones of the project. We did some stakeholder interviews with property owners and business owners in the area to kind of hear what their concerns were, what they think are opportunities downtown. And we did an online open house and a survey early in the project to learn more about existing conditions and potential goals and objectives for the project. And then, the following year, we did an in-person open house, which was great. It was kind of one of the, I think it was the first in-person open house I'd done in a couple of years after many years of being kind of remote and virtual. And we were, at that point, we were looking at some kind of ideas and recommendations for potential redevelopment, future redevelopment of opportunity sites downtown, some street designs. And then throughout the project, we have, you know, project website, regular updates to the parties and social media posts. So in terms of the recommendations, we kind of have five key recommendations, and within each of those recommendations or strategies, which within each of those are specific actions. And on the next slide, it shows the kind of implementation, recommended implementation timeline. So, the action, the fine group, the near term, which is things that the city can start working on within the next, you know, year, a few years, medium term, sort of two to five years, and then longer term are roughly five to ten years. So the first recommendation or strategy is retaining and growing small businesses downtown as well as attracting new businesses. So I'm not going to kind of read through all of these strategies, again, we've gotten this presentation reports, it's all in the packet. But just to kind of touch on some, some key highlights here, really that the sort of immediate work, which I think the city has already kind of gotten started on, is just reaching out to business owners and property owners and finding information and starting to kind of develop a strategy for how we're going to make sure that existing businesses are strengthened and creating the opportunities for new businesses. And then in the, in the medium term, the city could take kind of more organizational actions to establish a main street, a formal main street program, organizing a business district that can do shared marketing and promote events and things like that. Establishing a storefront improvement program to provide grants or loans for folks that want to make some kind of aesthetic or functional improvements to their properties, and providing some support for small businesses and microenterprises, startup businesses, and then starting to move some of those kind of targeted business areas forward of city strategies and support. The next topic is fostering a favorable environment for private investment and adaptive reuse. So this, this strategy is really about kind of making sure that the conditions on the grounds and in the development code are ready to kind of support development or redevelopment at the time that that becomes viable or when, you know, property owners want to, you know, make some changes to their properties. So, so one of those is ensuring the zoning code supports complementary land uses and development, and that's kind of the key focus of tonight is really on those development code changes.
Sorry, were you not ready?
Yeah, we can keep going. Yeah, so, I mean, facilitating reuse of unreused, key underused properties or kind of medium term, helping me sort of repurpose existing properties, existing buildings, and make them more useful and functional. And then longer term, the city could take a more active role in acquiring additional properties potentially through the urban renewal program and undergoing kind of catalytic redevelopment projects that are used for additional investment in downtown. And then the first strategy is really focused on the civic center site with the library and the city hall and really using that opportunity of kind of expanding and rethinking those spaces that the city has been doing, and kind of incorporating that into sort of go into the for redevelopment, new envision of the downtown. And incorporating public spaces is part of that work, so. Yeah, so supporting new events, farmers markets, other kind of annual holiday events, things like that. Potentially establishing new community gathering spaces with kind of underused properties that are there today. And then longer term, facilitating the redevelopment of the city owned properties and the report has some recommendations for, you know, sort of creative ways that that can happen. And then also considering the use, partnering with the Twalston Valley Fire Rescue property, if they ever want to relocate their, their fire station and that site becomes available, that would be a key opportunity to say downtown. The third strategy is about building appropriate infrastructure for a safe and accessible downtown. So this, this is really about enhancing the sort of public street scape for both safety purposes, but then also incorporating street improvements and to really making the, making downtown more attractive and feeling a nice place to be. So, the near, on the near term, we recommended some new street cross-section design standards, which at some point, we recommended the city adopt those and so they're T S D and into the development code. So those are the new standards. And then, medium term, kind of looking at some new sort of street furnishing products, so benches and lighting and things like that to really enhance downtown. Exploring potential public art or signage opportunities if the intersection at Glencoe and Commercial Street, whatever it is to be improved at some point. That's a, that's a great opportunity to kind of welcome folks into downtown and make sure that they know where they're going to get downtown. And then longer term, undertaking a project actually to build those improvements and potentially incorporate, you know, undergrounding utilities so that, you know, the kind of overhead power lines are not, not an eyesore in the future. Next slide, this is the last one, which is creating future opportunities for housing. So, the first step is really just ensuring that housing types are allowed downtown, so that again is tied to the development code amendments that are in front of you tonight. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then longer term, medium and longer term, the city could look at potentially increasing opportunities, like further increasing opportunities for housing downtown and more kind of actively encouraging housing developments and potentially even partnering with a developer to participate in housing development. Again, in the longer term, the max effort use and development is maybe a little more supportive in the city. So that's the overview of the plan. And again, I know that was all repeat information for you, so I appreciate you having me through. But now we're going to get into kind of the meat of what we're discussing this evening, which are the proposed development code amendments. And so, the first one is focus on the C one zone, the community commercial zone, which is kind of the main downtown zone, and see that in the corner there, in the pink. And so the first proposed update to the zone could be a proposed permitted uses is to allow ground floor residential uses on sites, but not runs onto Commercial Street. So in the current code today, you are required to have a commercial use on the ground floor for developments throughout the C one zone, and that includes sites that don't run onto Commercial Street, which is obviously the main, kind of the main street for downtown. So, I think this would, this would kind of increase flexibility for future developments. If you did allow, say, new, you know, multifamily development or condos or townhomes for sites that aren't on that sort of retail commercial front range. So for sites facing Hayburn Street or, you know, Main Street or 313th. You think that that would be an appropriate change to, again, increase flexibility, create more opportunities for housing, and create more, you know, opportunities for the, for the property owners to use their site in different ways. So that's, that's the recommendation. On the next slide, we did hear at the, at the work session, some concern about this recommendation and the potential impacts it might have in terms of using those commercial opportunities in the C one zone. And so just to kind of reiterate the intent of this recommendation, which is to keep Commercial Street as the main kind of retail commercial focus of downtown. That's where we want new developments, new commercial developments to happen. And we really want that, that frontage to be filled in with new developments, sort of those gaps are built. And then, again, residential development might be appropriate on sites that are not directly on Commercial Street. And that would really support the business, business activity and vitality that we really want for downtown North Plains and support, yeah, support this business with good track. So that is still staff and the consulting team's recommendation, but we did talk about some potential compromises if this continues to be a concern about changing, increasing this allowance for residential that we could consider kind of further allowing that. And this really kind of depends on the city through some of the zoning, which is not part of the proposal, but it's something the city is thinking about extending the C one zone. And if that were to happen, we could see a compromise where we continue to limit the ground floor to just commercial, Hayburn Street between 313th and Main Street, so that kind of that two block or of downtown, but then for other street franchises to allow residential development. So that's, that's a kind of compromise, but again, we recommend the change as proposed in the back. And then as for the rest of the permitted use, proposed changes, we're recommending that childcare centers be permitted outright. So currently, they require a conditional use permit, and we feel that this is an appropriate use for downtown. Creates a lot of activity. I have a God or a preschool, and there's always kind of people coming and going. And we think that, you know, it's a, an appropriate use of existing buildings and maybe a part of a future kind of mixed use development. We recommend prohibiting dry food businesses altogether. This is another thing that would require a condition of use permit today. But, you know, dry foods are just going to not compatible with a kind of walkable, safe downtown that we're envisioning. So we recommend that those be just prohibited outright. And then also prohibiting large format retail, which are buildings over thirty thousand square feet. So essentially, the big box stores, again, are sort of not supported by the type of, you know, small business, small town character. And then the other proposed change to the C one zone is some additional design standards that would kind of support the kind of more pedestrian scale visual interest, one of the things that make it really pleasant to kind of walk along the street. And ensure that redevelopment is really high quality. Supports to find that atmosphere that the city was looking for. So, the recommendations are emphasizing building entries with architectural features, requiring a minimum coverage of windows along street facing facades, requiring weather protection just along Commercial Street, some minimum facade articulation and detailing, so just features of the facade to kind of break up long expanses of walls. You can see in the diagrams, some examples of what that, from the balcony, was building projections, their windows, and stuff like that. And then the last one is just making sure that building materials that really aren't supportive of high-quality architecture that goes for historic downtown, making sure that those are not, not allowed, in redevelopment. So this is another item where at the, at the work session, there were some concerns about the, the weather protection requirements. And the current draft would propose that seventy-five percent of the building frontage have either awnings or canopies that, that provide, you know, protection from rain and sun. And this not only provides that kind of functional purpose, but it also kind of helps bring down the scale of buildings, increase the kind of pedestrian scale, that it's really feel more comfortable to walk along the street, more pleasant to walk along the street. And really kind of promotes the idea that signage, I think that was one of the concerns, is that signs are less, less easy to see from the street, but the idea that signage is really, should be kind of oriented more towards pedestrians, because we're trying to kind of get those to get out of their cars and walk around and doesn't necessarily need to be really visible when a car is riding by. And just to point out that some of the standards in the, in the proposed draft are to require that awnings and canopies be made of materials like glass, metal, epoxy glass, or exterior grade fabric. So there's kind of standards that would prevent, you know, cheap-looking vinyl and that kind of thing, you know, so they look, look for high quality. And so we continue to recommend this requirement. But we did talk about some potential compromises if there are still concerns about this one, which is to potentially allow this as an option that, that an applicant could choose to kind of help kind of break up the facade of a building, but not necessarily to acquire it. And I don't have this written down here, but another option is to require it on a smaller percentage of the building fronting. So it could be, say, fifty percent, rather than seventy-five percent. For the M two zone, the general industrial zone, so this is the zone that applies kind of on the western portion of the downtown area. And really, the only small trainings that we're proposing through is focused just on the block that's just to the west of Main Street on Commercial, just to prohibit new heavy industrial uses on that block. So anything that's there today can continue to operate. But any new proposed party enough uses, we just, I think, since that is such, just an extension of the downtown core, I think we would want that to kind of work towards more compatible uses with sort of retail, commercial, development. And then the last topic is off-street parking. So we're proposing a few reductions to some of the minimum parking ratios. We're just a handful of commercial use categories. And so that we're not recommending any changes to residential parking ratios. So the categories that we recommend reductions to are retail stores, medical and dentist clinics, eating and drinking establishments, and hotels. And just, you know, to reiterate the point that really excessive parking requirements can limit development opportunities on a site. And then, you know, large parking areas tend to kind of detract from the walkable kind of vibrant street state that is desired there. So this is another one where we heard a little concerning, there was some We heard a little concerning there was in the session. So we just wanted to give an example of. Kind of the effects of the the parking standards as they are today. So this is an example of the the restaurant parking ratio and and what. What you can build on a site under those requirements. So taking a five thousand square foot lot is an example. The current ratio is one parking space for every one hundred square feet of gross floor area. And a common rule from the parking law is that you need about three hundred and fifty square feet. Of parking area space between the parking space itself and the kind of vehicle maneuvering area. For each for each parking space. So when you do, when you crunch the numbers, you find out that the building can only be about eleven hundred square feet maximum. And that occupies only about twenty twenty to twenty five percent of of the site, and the rest of the site would have to be devoted to parking. So you can see that's, you know, just really limiting how much actual building, you know, active use we can have on that site and. We end up with kind of a C one parking. So the proposed change to this particular standard is to. To change it to one space for every two hundred square feet. So essentially you could have about double the size of the building site. And this is, this is a very like. Rough calculation. There are of course other factors we have to consider in terms of landscaping setbacks. Other vehicle vehicle maneuvering space and things like that. Whereas it's just kind of a rough, rough example. So I think that's my last slide. Yeah. So be happy to answer questions if there's anything. Did they actually eliminate the coverage or did they eliminate the requirement for coverage?
I think they've been working on it, so.
I don't, I'm I'm not sure. It could be that those are kind of more of the traditional kind of. Bubble kind of awnings that aren't necessarily what we would recommend for downtown apartments for new development. I think it could. I have actually seen specific. Prohibitions on that that sort of shape of awnings. That's not something to be included, but we we could consider that as well. There is a requirement that any transom windows not be blocked by an awning. Or canopy. But I think in new development, the type of awning or canopy that we typically see is kind of more of a structural. More of a horizontal projection rather than a fabric awning. And I think. I think that's more likely what you're you're back with this. Yeah, well, we we compared it to, we compared North Plains standards to the model code, the state's model code for small cities. And so that's where the rough negotiations came from. We did not do a comprehensive analysis of, you know, downtown parking standards, but I would say places like Hillsborough generally have. Relatively flexible standards, especially when they're downtown. And actually now, under the state's new climate friendly and equitable communities rules, a lot of cities are going to be just removing their parking requirements, et cetera. That doesn't affect North Plains, but larger cities are a grown of those dangers. So. The short answer. Okay. So keeping the back, keep the requirement for ground floor commercial C one zone? Okay, so if if the C one zone crosses Haverystreet. Sorry, I'm a little bit lost. It's the setbacks. I'm, I'm trying to understand this. Okay. Would it, would it change anything if the the setback standards were different?
No, the whole concept.
So the proposal would only allow additional users. It wouldn't exclude the use of the ground floor, but most of the use, of course. It would just also allow ground floor residential in addition. So I guess I I don't see it as a. Creating commercial opportunities. I think that that kind of requires separate loading. Has separate loading standards. So we wouldn't propose that just for the minimum parking ratios. We didn't look at that at loading. We didn't focus on loading. Do you have a recommendation for?
One thing I've noticed when it comes to loading, particularly for businesses that are in confined spaces like a downtown area. They tend to work with their vendors to have them deliver off hours, off peak hours. So they come early in the morning or. Or later in the evening to try and prevent a conflict with the day to day uses down there. So. We we have not addressed the loading requirement with this particular proposal. But I do know that businesses are very good at responding to the conditions that they're in and making it work. And so. We may have situations where we do have a requirement to abide a loading dock or a loading area. But my guess is that they will work with their vendors to make sure they're delivering where it's convenient for everybody. And and so this particular parking that we're talking about is not necessarily the on-street parking. It's the on-site parking requirement. So parking that would be required to be on the property with the development. That's the one we're talking about. Right now it's required to be on-site. That's the parking we're talking about, on-site parking. Not seeing any hand raised. So I assume everybody's good. Oh, wait, we we do have a member here in the audience, it looks like. I think you gotta pull the button up there. There we go.
Deciding to see our our city grow and so it's. Curious if any, you mentioned economic incentives. Related to developing the downtown business for the, one, is there any?
Proposal for incentives or assistance for businesses to relocate. Downtown quarter along commercial street and a number of businesses that I wouldn't. Necessarily say are consistent with a industry bill on commercial current. Is that something that I've been discussing?
Relocating existing businesses to open downtown? Yeah, that wasn't that wasn't the focus of of what we were briefly talking about. More to kind of encourage. When new businesses are looking up, locating in North Plains, the fills are really consistent with the type of. Business activity that we that would be better for sure.
Is there any plan for. Tackling the the pace of development of. We're talking about developing affordable housing or housing consistent with that nature in the downtown area. That any any distance or a pace of development with that, that that would be relative to the kind of jobs that are being developed in the area as well. You know, I'm thinking, you know, it tends to be that there are the needs to be opportunities that are affordable for people who have sort of jobs to live and work in the. Those areas and providing a plan to keep the pace consistent. So that we don't stand up, you know, a dozen new restaurants that, you know, with food truck pods. So forth and have more question people live. That's the ethic of it. I definitely would like to see a plan for. For coupling those together and so making sure that we have a chance to stay at the pace of everyone, the people who live in our areas and in lots of our.
I mean, I think that's a really big one. It's not really something that we focused on necessarily. I think housing generally wasn't. A huge focus of this project. It was mostly on kind of supporting business, economic development as a primary goal. But I will say that the city has a housing news analysis that it adopted a few years ago. And that identified, you know, future, current and future moods for housing in various income levels. And, you know, the city. I imagine is working on, working towards achieving reading those housing news over the longer term. I think the downtown project is is related to that in the extent that we we support or we recommend supporting more housing development downtown and more. Housing choices downtown, so more opportunities for, you know, rental apartments, also condos, townhomes, kind of. Alternatives to kind of sustainable development that that has been mostly built up today, although. You're seeing more of those different places happening versus being built from the newer development as well. So.
Yeah, just to add a little bit to that, you know, in addition to the downtown improvement plan, we are currently working on an urban growth boundary expansion, and that includes. Kind of a whole nother package, if you will, you know. And so I think right now. The city's biggest need is to get some additional land in for development. We right now don't really have any land available for development beyond the Bryn Hill subdivision. And there are a couple of small little pockets of lands inside the city right now that that could be redeveloped, but they're. It's a it's a market driven system. And so when they come available for sale, a developer would have an opportunity to purchase those properties and. Develop them into potential apartment complexes or or a housing development. But I think right now in terms of future housing, we'll be looking to get get that with the U G B expansion.
What would I do with helpful about? I don't have it on you again, the word is it?
Oh, that was mine. It was in my script. Sorry. Would you like right now? Ten three dash zero three eight. And the title of it is the North Plains Downtown Improvement Plan and Code Text Amendment. Correct.
So I'd like to make a motion to recommend to city council to. Plan C A three three dash zero P A. North Plains Downtown Steven Plan and Code Text Amendment.
For city council? It'll be Monday.
The seventeenth.
The seventeenth. So I didn't know, I didn't know the date. New business. There is new business coming your way, obviously. You know, we are going to start our U G B expansion hearings very soon here. So you do have a joint work session coming up with. The city council to kind of kick that off and and talk about it. And then we'll start bringing that proposal forward to you. The city council to kind of kick that off and talk about it and then we'll start bringing that proposal forward to you. So I do anticipate having quite a few folks in attendance. I think that's a pretty exciting proposal, so looking forward to having that. As you just heard tonight, there could be a potential text amendment coming your way for the clear vision area. And then, you know, in terms of future applications, it looks like we will be deeming the. Spec warehouse building application complete this week, so we'll start looking at scheduling that soon for you as well to have that hearing. So that's really kind of what's upcoming, if you will, in the near future for you. Unfinished business, you know, we still unfortunately have that sign code hanging out there that we would like. To talk about and we keep getting hit with these bigger projects that kind of push it down the road a little bit, so I am looking to try and find some time to bring that back to you. In a work session and right now, I think once we get through the joint work session with city council for the UGB. Which will be at a city council meeting, but that will take up some of your time, so. Probably after that, we could start bringing the sign code back for some consideration of some amendments to that. But that's, that's really probably the biggest unfinished business that we have right now is addressing the sign code.
I have a list. Thank you very much, Sheri. Appreciate that. I do have a couple of things, so I just wanted to refer to your attention if you aren't already aware. So on, so Monday the seventeenth, that's when we will have our work session, the city council and the planning commission of UGB, so. Yes.
Yes.
Look forward to seeing you all here. And then tomorrow night is the North Plains Association, the, it's a community dinner. Six o'clock here, hope to see you all tomorrow night. Budget committee starts on the nineteenth and Lori, do we still have a vacancy on that particular committee? We have two vacancies. So we are looking for volunteers in the community that could potentially do that if you're interested, please see Lori this evening. That would be awesome. It's only a small amount of time, but if anyone. On the commission wants to per take as well, definitely talk to Lori about that. And then probably our biggest. Topic that we're focusing on as well is. April twentieth is the public safety. Community Q and A and it will be here at this event at six o'clock. So we are putting out a public safety ready measure thirty four dash three two two. And that is going to. Go on the ballot in May. If it passes, there's a great, there's an opportunity for us to have. Two additional police officers on duty. There's a cost to that. If it doesn't pass, then obviously the city council is going to have to. Go back to the school and get a world agreement. And trying to figure out how to continue serving the folks in the off hours and evening hours, but. It's a topic we've been discussing for several years, but. If you have questions, you want to learn more about it, certainly encourage you to be here on the forum at six o'clock. And I'm welcome to stick around after this meeting and answer any additional questions that goes out. And then a new program that we learned about from Bill Reed. Our finance director goes, we have a new urban renewal agency kind of improvement program, grant. Program for new food establishments. Looking to open up in North Plains and we've already had two businesses actually look into the grant program. That will help them. And I think one of them was the new yogurt place, right? And so that's really exciting. So, you know, food establishments are looking to open up a business here in North Plains. We have an opportunity, we have a grant program that they can look into and take advantage of and help. With maybe some of the build out cost, potential costs that. They would incur to, you know, renovate the inside of a place, so. That's kind of an exciting thing for us to be able to have for, for people wanting to come into our place. Just wanted to bring you all up to speed on that as well, so. Any questions from the commission? Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the mayor for mentioning the yogurt shop. If you haven't seen it, they are going to be opening up in the. Roll tide building there by Taco Bell. They have a coming soon sign up right now for the space where they're going to be at, so that's the first new business. Into that building, which is very exciting, so looking forward to that. Other than that. You know, we get a lot of phone calls about people who want to develop in downtown and in the city and, you know, that has not happened yet, so kind of. Anxious to see where these are going, you know, we get calls on the property down there by the memorial park there. That vacant piece of land there between the park and McDonald's, we're starting to get regular calls on that. We've been getting some calls about the property on the corner of Gordon and North regularly, trying to figure out how to develop that. Because it is zone. Two point five, which is a higher density zone, we have been letting the folks know that we're looking for a little bit of density onto that property, not just a one single family home. So I think folks are looking at maybe a potential partition there. There's two lots. And they did a recent lot line adjustment to reconfigure it, and so I think they might partition the vacant parcel into three lots. And maybe get some duplexes and triplexes there to get a little bit more housing in that area, so we'll see how that goes. Other than that, I think that's about it, but I will make one more comment. Sometimes you never know where things are going to go in the public process and I know it's been a little rough. For folks over in the Bryn Hill subdivision with the whole clear vision stuff and whatnot, but look at what it's done. It has brought people into our world to participate and be a part of the city and so I appreciate you folks for coming. I appreciate your patience as we work through this particular issue for you to get some resolution. But, you know, sometimes there's some good that come from some bad and having you folks here in attendance is a really positive thing, so thank you for attending. It is temporary. We have approved them for signs, so they can change the face out on the tall sign there. That's all they can do, because as you know, it's a. It's a nonconforming sign, so it's very limited on what they can do to that sign.
I have a comment about it. It's had a abandoned sign on your property for a long time. And this is the perfect opportunity. If there was, there was being the permits to get the big one updated, that one needs to go away.
And we did that as a condition of approval. It's supposed to be removed by the end of April. So I don't think, I don't think they're going to do it. I think we're going to have to, you know, nudge them along a little bit to get it done. But we did acknowledge that in our decision that it has been abandoned for over ten years and it's time for that to go away. So even if they just laid it on the ground right now, I'd be happy with that. Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, let me get that. Where is it?